All right, thank you, everyone. So tonight we'll be presenting the town manager's proposed fiscal 25 operating and capital budget. The focus tonight will be on the operating budget. We will have another public hearing on the capital budget later down the line. Pursuant to section seven dash one of our charter, the operating budget is to be transmitted to the town council by March 10th. And the annual capital budget and five-year capital expenditure plan must be transmitted to the town council by July 15th. But both operating and capital budgets are submitted to you together for fiscal 25, for consideration by the town council. And only the operating budget must be adopted by April 30th. And the capital needs to be adopted by late August for any referendum items in November. So just an overview of what I'll be covering. I'll start with the budget context surrounding the submission of this budget. A little bit about grand list and revaluation, which is unique to this year and every five years. We'll talk about revenues and fund balance and surplus. Followed that with expenditures and major budget drivers, discussion on the mill rate, average taxpayer impact and the cost per department. Then some more information about debt service, also the community pool and the water pollution control department, special revenue funds. And then finally, a few slides on the capital budget and the budget review schedule. So presented before you is the total general fund operating budget, which for fiscal 25 is recommended at $140,943,831. This is an increase of a little over $7.9 million or 5.97%. You'll see the major budget categories listed above, and we'll be diving further into this tonight. General government are all of your noneducational municipal services. That's an increase of $1.8 million or 4.74%. The education budget, as recommended and forwarded by the Board of Education, is at $90 million and $90,67,609, an increase of just over $5 million or 5.97%. You see debt service is up 24% at $1.8 million. This will cover this a little further in some later slides, but this is principal and interest on previously approved and the and bond issued projects that have been approved previously and that we're now paying the debt back on. Capital nonrecurring, you'll notice a significant decrease in the amount set aside for this. We'll talk about this a little bit later, too. But largely, historically, we've budgeted $1.1 million. Last year, we, supported by some of our ARPA funds, we increased that amount. We would really like to get this number higher. The higher we are able to get capital nonrecurring, of course, is less, that's paying cash for your capital items as opposed to borrowing and paying interest. Unfortunately, although best laid plans were to kind of keep that as high as possible, I wasn't able to keep it at this stage as high as I'd like, just given the nature of some of the other budget pressures that we had. And then you'll see contingency, which we historically budgeted at $125,000. So just a brief budget history back in, as we approved the fiscal 21 budget, that was the March of 2020, right when COVID was onset and some of our budget scheduling was altered. And of course, the whole world was a very uncertain place. That year, we passed a fiscal 21 budget with no mill rate increase or no tax increase, relying on $2 million of fund equity, supported by the budget surplus for that year, fiscal 20, for the prior year. We cut pandemic impacted services and we froze positions. The next couple of budgets were really building out of that experience, restoring some of the services that we had previously cut back. But we're still able to put forward a budget, approve a budget of 1.51% tax increase or 0.5 mil increase. By that time, we had ARPA funds at our disposal, including, and we used 1.4 million of ARPA funds as general fund revenue, appropriated 1.5 million of ARPA funds for the BOE Medical Trust Fund, and appropriated 325,000 for a bulky waste collection, although the final cost was $239. In fiscal 23, we had a 0.6 mil increase, 1.78% tax increase. That budget using 500,000 of ARPA funds as general fund revenue, supporting CNR projects, appropriating 1.7 million of fund equity, supported by fiscal 22 budget surplus. And finally, last year, or really the year we're in now, right, the last budget year we planned, but fiscal 24, we passed a 0.77 mil rate increase or 2.24%. This year's budget, last year's budget, was $800,000 worth of ARPA funds as general fund revenue for two property purchases, also included $280,000 for a townwide bulky waste collection, and appropriated $2 million of fund equity, supported by the fiscal 23 budget surplus. This year's budget context, again, and the topic of the workshop later tonight, so I won't get too far into. The Board of Education request comes across at just over $5 million. Again, I won't get into the details there because tonight conveniently is probably a lengthy discussion of the Board of Ed's budget. But, you know, that's obviously a major driver of the town, the town's overall budget. Our local unemployment data, most recent data from last month as February, as Cheshire at 3.3%, which is the sixth lowest out of the 169 towns in Connecticut, compares with a statewide average unemployment rate of 5%. We've experienced recent inflationary economic environment. Certainly, things have calmed down a little bit from the peak in '21 and '22, but our annual inflation rate as of the last report was at 3.2%, which is down from 7% and 6.5% the prior two years. But of course, we're still experiencing those significant cost increases as the baseline for a lot of our, a lot of our expenses. And on the town side, all of our union contracts are currently set to expire at the end of June, under negotiation now, but there's a level of uncertainty in terms of what those final wage rates will be, which drives a large portion of our overall operating budget. We always keep an eye to the state and governor's budget proposal this time of year. And typically, and just sort of for the folks that are going through their first budget here, we won't end up knowing officially what we will get from the state. Typically, they will, no matter if it's a long session or short session, they're not passing their final state budget until May or June. And as I said before, we have to pass ours by April 30th. So there's always a little bit of a leap of faith there, but in recent years, it's been much more consistent, but it's not too distant of a memory when those numbers were swinging sort of wildly even as we were trying to pass our budget. And hopefully, that's not the case this year. The proposed state aid from the governor's proposal this year is up slightly from the prior year, 3.9%. So that's $656,000 for a total state aid of 17 million, 17.3 million. The budget includes Cheshire's motor vehicle cap reimbursement increasing from $690,000 to $1 million. I won't spend a lot of time on this now, but we'll certainly talk about this during revenues. This is a very somewhat convoluted situation because, as you'll see, as you heard from the budget hearing announcement, our mill rate is proposed to be below the 32.46 mil cap. But because of the way the state first set this up, it's always looking one grand list back. So if you remember, the first year, we had to deal with that. It was not a complete dollar-for-dollar offset. It was actually short pretty significantly because it didn't account for where our mill rate was going and where our grand list was going in terms of the value of cars. So again, what's important to note is that we are expected, and we've confirmed with folks at CCM, the budget does call for Cheshire to be reimbursed for the cap. The way to look at it is really the cap that was in effect last year. We will get that revenue next year. The problem with that, of course, is the next year we plan, as we have a proposed mill rate pretty significantly under 32 mils, we cannot expect to receive any reimbursement the following year. So that $1 million that is in our revenue assumptions is effectively a sort of state-imposed cliff because we're not going to receive that money as a reimbursement in the future. ECS and pilot have increased about $269,000. Another item, I think we touched on last year, that isn't included in the governor's direct proposal, but it's a separate legislative mechanism, is a municipal revenue sharing account based off of sales tax returns that, or sales tax receipts that the state receives. And the last two years, you'll see, we, and part of the reason we've had those significant surpluses over the last couple of years, we've budgeted zero. The first year, towns didn't even know it was coming. The second year, it was unclear, and we were advised not to budget for the revenue because it was uncertain. We've received $576,000 in fiscal 23 and $726,000 this year. So my recommended budget does estimate that we should expect to receive 500,000, hopefully more. But note that that is in the revenue assumptions for this budget for the first time this year. Up next, federal COVID relief funds. Again, ARPA, we have to make our commitments by the, by December of this year. We had, before this budget, we had one, just under $1.3 million remaining of our ARPA funds, the original 8.5 million. This budget that I presented tonight does include the use of $500,000 of that towards revenue in this proposed fiscal 25 budget. And then the next couple of slides are going to be on grand list growth. Again, this is a very unique year. Cheshire experienced, as many towns have, but I think ours was, I would put ours up as significant or more so than almost any other town, with our revale compared to 2018 versus 2023, right? October 1st of 2023 is the grand list date that this budget is based on. That was a revale year, so right, one, every five years, state mandated that we do a full assessment of all properties across town and rebalance. I might actually have a slide on that in just a second. But first, I just want to touch on, if you don't count the revale effect, which we're going to get into, we still have had robust grand list growth consistent with the last four years. In our case, $39 million worth of assessed value, or what would be a 1.29% increase absent the effect of revaluation. Again, that follows 1.5%, 1.2%, 3.03% and 2.25% over the last four years. The revaluation portion totaled just under $1 billion of added value, 30% increase. Just to put that in perspective, again, revaluation, state mandated decree every five years, rebalances the grand list to ensure equity and fairness. And again, as I said, the values for October 1st of last year inform and support the budget we're planning for next year. The average residential property value increased 37.3%. And as you'll see, the blue columns here are revaluation years. The one we experienced in 2020 was really almost no different from a regular year. It was, I think it was a 0.6 or 0.7% increase. Back in 2015, there was a slight decrease in the overall grand list. Our last and previously most significant grand list increase, you have to go all the way back to 2005, but even that, you'll see, doesn't approach, each of those horizontal lines are $500 million worth of assessed value. So we had a $1 billion increase in overall property values here in Cheshire over last year. And again, where this really will come into play is this complicates the explanation of the tax impact, which we're going to get into in some later slides. But overall, and there's a lot of additional benefits to the fact that our properties are more desirable or more valuable than they were on the prior list. It also very much helps from an economic development standpoint and business attraction standpoint, having a mill rate that falls back down into the 20s. It's very attractive when businesses are shopping for where, what community they may want to set up shop in. So we'll talk a little bit more about that and certainly during the rest of the budget workshops. Just a little more about revaluation. Our total real estate portion of the grand list increased 38.8%. The business personal property list increased 9.9% or $19 million. And motor vehicle values actually decreased, which is not unsurprising because they were really spiking over the last couple of years, by $16 million or 4.5%. And here's a slide, just a chart I put together showing by some of the more common styles of homes in town. You have Colonial's Ranch, Cape Condos, Raised Ranch, Split Levels and Contemporary. The number next to each is the number that we have in town, so they're sorted by most popular. You'll see we have the vast majority of the houses in our community are Colonials or Ranches. And you'll see the average property value increase. So the reason I wanted to put this slide up, and again, it'll be a discussion that we have, is when we're setting the mill rate, there's going to be different impacts on different residents based on what actually happened to their individual house, right? I can give you a lot of averages. I can give you different styles where different, you know, where different impacts were felt by different types of properties. But even at the mill rate presented here, and we'll talk about later, the overall average tax impact is just over 8% from the, from the mill rate that we're establishing on the average of all houses. There are some properties, those that are, where their, their increase was under, say, 28 or so, 27%, where that would translate to actually about a flat tax bill, no increase at all, even some folks experiencing a decrease. On the other side of that, of course, the folks that have experienced increases 40% or higher are going to have a greater-than-average tax, year-over-year tax impact. But ultimately, that is also the purpose of revaluation, to make sure that everyone is paying their fair share. But of course, what stands out here, you'll certainly see condos, they were very much on the lower side of values before, historically, and it's kind of statewide. And over the last five years, those, you know, I think, increased dramatically, as you'll see there. So again, more that we'll cover as we get through some of our future discussions. And again, just, I mentioned before that this year, if, if we didn't have revale, we would have experienced, this says 1.29% in the far right-hand column here, just showing that our average for the prior 17 years, from 2000 to 2017, our average grand list growth was about just under a percent, it was 0.97%. And yet, in the last five years, we've experienced greater-than-average grand list growth, which you can see visually here. All right, so the proposed revenues to support the budget, you know, again, no big surprise, but taxes makes up with, with state aid and other departments and fund equity being relatively flat, taxes make up the vast majority of the revenues to support the operating budget. In this case, you'll see that that accounts for just over 80% of our overall revenue to support the budget. Here, that is in graphical form, again, property taxes serving as $113.9 million of the overall budget. Again, just, this is a slide we've done the last couple of years, just comparing to five, really, I guess, six years ago, fiscal 25 to fiscal 20 budget. You'll see that the, the portion that makes up each, the percent that makes up each of the major revenue categories has, has changed. You'll see that, let's see here, oh yeah, the property, again, but while the rest have stayed relatively flat, property taxes have, have increased in a dollar amount to, to make up the difference of the overall expenditure growth. I know this slide is a little harder to see, but this is a, a analysis of our projections for fund balance. The way this works is up on the top, you have what our fund balance was at the beginning of fiscal 24, so July 1 of '23. That was at $17.7 million, but we had adopted a budget that assumed we would use 2 million of that, which then brings it down to $15.7 million, also effectively on July 1st, right, the beginning of the fiscal year. You'll see our estimates, our budget and then estimated revenues and expenditures, expenditures I would expect by the end of the year are right on target, but are, we're currently projecting about $2.4 million of revenue surplus. So that, I don't know if you can see the cursor here, but over here, you'll see the $2.4 million total results from, from expenditures and revenue, which would then increase our projected fund balance to $18.1 million before we adopt the budget that's before us tonight. Again, as I said earlier, my budget now reduces that $2 million use of reserves down to 1 million, which is a little more traditional from what we've adopted in the past. And that would put our projected unassigned fund balance at $17.1 million. That represents 12.9% of our operating budget. We use our prior year adopted expenditures. And our policy is to maintain a minimum of 10%. And so what you see is the calculation here at the bottom is the difference between that 12.9% and 10% is worth about $3.8 million that we are above our fund balance policy. So now shifting over to expenditures, again, of the $140 million, this is just, again, a graphical representation of the major expenditure categories. Here they are kind of listed out, I won't go through all of them, but you'll see under general government, which again is all of our noneducational municipal services, you'll see the major categories there as they are presented in your budget books. And the major budget drivers, I'll just touch on briefly. This slide shows the overall 7.9 million that you'll see at the bottom, representing the 5.97% increase. And for each of those categories, what portion of that 5.97 sort of cumulatively builds up that is driving the overall budget increase? In this case, we have the Board of Education budget, as touched on before, which represents 3.82% of the, you know, of the 5.97. Debt service is another 1.39%. You have to take into account the reduction in capital nonrecurring, so that works the other direction from the 1.9 million down to the 1.1 million. And then under general government, these are all, we have contractual salary increases, assumptions that are in particularly for those negotiated contracts mentioned earlier. Fiscal 25, new positions and changes, the budget, which we'll be talking through during the workshops, the budget recommends three new positions, really two new positions and one modified existing position. Deputy Director of Public Works, replacing the old capital projects manager position, also an administrative assistant, too, for Arts Place, as they're expanding their programming in their new location. And then finally, one additional Parks Maintainer, given the demands on the department and the anticipation that Bartlam Park South, you know, next fiscal year will be fully available and being maintained by the town. Pension and 457 expenses, you'll see that's $269,000, again, 0.2% of the 5.97%. Positions approved in the current fiscal year, so the, the council recently, in response to significant demands on services, approved three positions this current year, Fire Marshal position, the HR Generalist position, and the building, the Assistant Building Official positions. So those, of course, are assumed to be continued within the existing budget, and those make up the $239,000 that you see there. Increases from, for liability and workers' comp insurance of $128,000 and social security expenses of $120,000. Those make up, again, the lion's share of the 7.9 million, all other changes in the entire budget account for just $265,000. So again, this is a little more complicated of a graph than we've had in years past, but again, this is due to the change in property values because of revaluation. But as mentioned before, our proposed mill rate is 28.38 mils. You'll see here our current taxes at 35.09 mils, so almost seven mils lower. But that is based on the last grand list, which had an average assessed value of $216,000. So that translates to about $309,000 of full market value, raised value. The new grand list, average property on the new grand list has an assessed value of $297,000, which translates to $425,000 in full value. So the taxes on each of those, you'll see calculated in the far right-hand column. So again, the old value, but at 35.09 mils, and the new values at 28.38 mils. We also typically assume two average valued vehicles per household. And those you see here, those actually fell, as mentioned before, from an assessed value of $13,400 and to $12,700. And so the associated taxes with both of those are calculated here. Of course, remember, the taxes previously were capped by the state, so you don't get as much budget relief as you would otherwise because they weren't at 35 mils, they were at 32.46. So in the end, when you add those all together, the new proposed average tax bill under this budget is an increase of $694 as it stands now, or 8.2% to a grand total of $9,173. So at this point in the presentation, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about where your tax dollars go. So that $9,173 annually, you'll see the breakdown just based on where our expenditure proportions are in the budget. Board of Education, about $5,862, General Government, $2,614. Debt service on all of our previously approved capital projects is $617. Cash for capital, that's the CNR, at $72, and contingency at eight. But typically, you know, with a lot of our other services that we have as households, whether it's cable or internet and your electric bill, it's worth looking at what that breaks down to monthly, if you're really comparing. And with some of our services, as I'll get to, it's a more direct comparison. What I've done is taken that and just broken it down monthly. And you'll see in general government, costs the average taxpayer about $218 a month. And if you take just that 218 a little further, I thought this was sort of a, an interesting way to look at it, you can see sort of what each of our major departments, and in some cases, I pulled components out of those departments to see how much they cost the average taxpayer on a monthly basis. And so the biggest pie piece there on the municipal side is police and animal control at $39 a month. You will see, you know, both retirement and health insurance, of course, those are catchall budget lines that cover all of the municipal departments with respect to personnel. But you'll see retirement expenses, public works and engineering at $30 a month, finance, which includes the Assessor Tax Office and our Information Technology Department at $16 a month. Trash and recycling, which I pulled out of the public works section of the budget, but because I think it's pretty informative, $13 a month for trash and recycling, which translates to about $150 a year. If you compare it to a number of our towns, including peer towns, surrounding towns, I can tell you, having formerly worked for the, the town at Simsbury, it doesn't provide municipal trash and recycling services. I checked just recently to confirm their, their current rate for private trash collection, curbside trash collection, just like we provide here, is $235 every six months, right? So it's $470 a year. And we're able to offer that service to our taxpayers for $150 a year. That's a similar rate I know that they pay in Wallingford and some other places nearby. So some of these, I think, when we're trying to compare apples to apples or mill rates to mill rates, it can be hard to compare, you know, to neighboring towns. But you really, to try to compare on the most level playing field, you have to consider the wide variety of services that we offer and the high-quality services we offer here in the town across the board, including both the town and the, and the Board of Education, as we'll be talking about later tonight. So again, I won't go through all of these, but you'll see the rest of those town departments and how they translate for what the average taxpayer is contributing for those services that we've agreed as a community and as a society that we will offer for our residents' use, that we'll pay for collectively, as opposed to trying to offer any of these services, many of them that you really couldn't offer if they were only done privately. So moving on to debt service, this is just a historical graph of where our overall budgetary debt service has been. But budgetary, I think, is going to be important, as I show you a future slide here. This is where it's going, right? So we know, as we have some of our, we have two major capital projects and the two new schools underway, but also based on recently approved capital budgets over the last few years, these are our debt service projections based on some assumptions, including assumptions on expenditures, but these are percents of our overall budget. You'll see getting up to 13 and 14% of our overall operating budget, which, which is about double where our debt service has historically been as a portion of the budget. This slide is really hard to see, I recognize, and we'll delve into it more when we get to that budget workshop, but we have the gross budget, sorry, the gross amount of debt service, principal and interest, that we budget for, but we've offset those with debt service reserve funds, settlements, bond premiums over the years, and it ultimately results in the far right column, which, which is a reduced number, but as you'll see, we're, and this slide, I think, shows it more graphically. Back in fiscal 18 and 19, we were only having to budget, from an operating budget standpoint, the darker green line underneath. Our actual debt service was the higher number combined, but we were able to offset with significant reserves. We knew those were winding down, we were phasing in some of the costs from particularly the water treatment plant upgrades, but as you phase in anything, right, you are still absorbing the increase. Coupled with the future debt service that we anticipate from the, the construction of the two schools, you'll see that that debt service line that in this budget is, for the fiscal 25, is right here, just, and that that will be going up significantly over the next couple of years. That's going to be a real budget pressure as we talk about this, this section of the budget in future years. All right, just briefly, want to touch on both the community pool and the water pollution control department. Both of those are special revenue funds. They are not directly supported by the operating budget. Of course, in the pools case, there is a subsidy that we budget for in the general operating budget, but they're designed to collect their own revenue and try to support their own expenditures. You'll see the community budgets proposed at 1.2, the community pool budget is proposed at $1.2 million, an increase of $77,000. Pool fee revenues continue to track and meet and exceed the $725,000 budget. Pool fee revenues continue to track and meet and exceed the $725,000 budget for the current year, the highest ever. I think we're tracking towards $775,000. The town subsidy contribution is recommended to stay flat at 304,000, that's down almost 200 from where it was a few years ago. Reserves at the year-end are projected to remain healthy at approximately $203,000 or 16.8 percent. There are many years where we had no reserves in the community pool fund at all, so that's a wonderful thing. But we do still have expenditure pressures. We have an aging facility, we have a boiler repair and replacement that's very much needed and is being designed now, roof leaks and pool decking issues that continue. So more expenditures, we'll talk about some of that during the capital budget. And the Water Pollution Control Department, a recommended budget of just over $5 million. This shows as a decrease of $119,000, but it's really not. That's due to the $475,000 emergency appropriation we just made at our recent budget meeting. That's in that five, that's in the increase to the current year's budget. So if you just compare the fiscal 25 proposed budget to what we adopted last year, absent the emergency appropriation, it's an increase of $269,000 or 7.5 percent. Recommends a $10 sewer fee increase to $475. Recommends improvements to funding levels to maintain the aging components and a switch to contracted sludge hauling. And the proposed fiscal 25, $132,000 use of reserve fund equity due to ongoing remediation and deferred maintenance, and reserves that, for fiscal 25 year-end, projected to be just under $600,000 or 11.8 percent of their annual operating expenditures. All right, again, tonight is not a hearing for the capital budget, but again, as they're presented simultaneously in the, in the budget books, I'll just quickly touch on the proposed capital plan. Again, historically reviewed in the summer, last year we adopted in two phases, July 11th and August 10th. This includes five-year plan for capital expenditures, but note that year one is the only one officially approved and appropriated for use by, excuse me, for use by, by the town, by, for, by departments. The recommended five-year CEP is 159, we had $159 million requested by departments and the Board of Education. I've reduced this by $9.3 million for a total of 149 million, or just under 150 million dollars, that's over all five years of the plan. This is an increase of $44.6 million compared with last year's adopted five-year capital plan. The net capital costs, so there's $23.1 million in offsetting grants for available cash, CNR cash funding. This reduces the net capital costs, which would need to be bonded, to 126.8 million dollars. And the adopted five-year CEPs have averaged 108.3 million gross or 81 million net over the last five budgets, and this chart shows the same, if you'd like to see where our adopted budgets were over the last 10 years. And just a few highlights, the recommended first-year project appropriations include $15.5 million, include $700,000 to replace the DPW salt shed, $2 million included for road improvement program, $1.6 million for the last section of the East Johnson Road reconstruction, $500,000 requested for various sidewalk improvements, including $300,000 for Jarvis Marion sidewalk extensions, $100,000 for sidewalk extension program, and $100,000 for the sidewalk maintenance program. And also four, just over $4 million requested for school projects. And that will pretty much wrap it up, just, all of these documents, including both budget books, are available on our website, the link you can see on the screen. And just briefly, we have budget, we have a busy couple of weeks heading up, we have this meeting tonight, Tuesday, March 19th, where we're covering Board of Education, we have this Thursday, March 21st, for Public Works, Engineering, and Water Pollution. We also have this Saturday at 9:30 a.m. here in Council Chambers for Fire, Police, Animal Control, Library, Recreation, Pool, Arts Place, and Discussion of Revenues. Next week, we'll be meeting on Tuesday, the 26th, for Planning, Economic Development, Building, Town Clerk, Elections, Human Services, and Public Health. And then that Thursday, next Thursday, the 28th, for Finance, Debt Service, CNR, Employee Benefits, Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney, and Human Resources. And then additional budget reviews to be scheduled April 15th, and you have a proposed public information session on April 16th for sort of a public status update. Of course, all of our meetings are open to the public, and we encourage folks to, to attend and also to contribute their, their comments and thoughts. But we'll have a public information sort of presentation on the 16th of April. Final budget review is anticipated to be April 18th, and a proposed Town Council meeting for adoption is currently April 24th. That concludes, thank you to all of our budget team, as we call them, both in the Finance Department and the Town Manager's Office, Tax and HR, for all of their critical support throughout the budget development. So thank you very much.
So because this is indeed a public hearing and our opportunity to hear from the public, I will ask anyone that's here from the public that would like to speak on the budget to please come forward and do so. Just state your name and address for the record.
Ben Palladino, 25, La Clerc Ave, Cheshire, Connecticut. All right?
Oh, 641L.
641L, you're correct. 20203 number, landline. All right. So good evening. I want to thank all members of the Town Council that are here tonight for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Approximately six months ago, over 50 members of the Cheshire fencing community, which encompasses parents, alumni, volunteer coaches, and student athletes, they attended a board meeting and over half of them spoke, because they wanted to make Cheshire fencing a varsity sport. Now, my wife and I moved to this community because, as two educators, we believe that Cheshire's school system was where we wanted our children to attend for its values and high standards. We believe that equity was systemic throughout all portions of the educational system. Now, I was surprised when I discovered that fencing, an Olympic sport, was only a club. Now, our fencers put in just as much time as their peers in other sports that are recognized as varsity sports. The fencing team participates in a league where most schools are recognized, where most schools recognize their fencers at the varsity level. In fact, Cheshire's in a league where teams have the opportunity to become league champions, and top fencers can earn the first and second-team all-conference honors. Plus, there's an all-state individual tournament where the top eight state champions are named first and second-team all-state in their respective weapons. Also, teams may qualify, participate in the Team State Tournament that encompasses all schools, regardless of their school size or class, where winners in each weapon category will be crowned Team State Champions. This year, the annual novice state tournament, Cheshire had seven fencers that placed ranging from first through seventh place. In the JV State Tournament, Cheshire took first, third, and seventh places in various weapons. At the varsity level, Cheshire fencing had two fencers that earned first-team all-conference and academic all-conference. Men's Team FA went undefeated in their regular season and placed second in the conference championships. At the state level, one fencer placed third overall in the individual Connecticut State Fencing Tournament, earning first-team all-state honors. Men's Team Saber placed eighth overall in the Connecticut High School State Tournament. And finishing off the highly successful season, Men's FA won the Connecticut State Fencing Tournament, earning the title of state champions, a feat not accomplished since 2013 in Cheshire. Now, with that kind of success, you'd think the various news outlets would have been notified of their accomplishments, but they were not celebrated in the Herald, or the Patch, or the Record Journal, because their status of a club. I wonder what our athletes must think when they enter an opposing school in our league and see the sport of fencing being celebrated on an equal playing field with their fellow varsity sports. I wonder what our athletes must think when they enter a gymnasium during an away meet and fencing conferences, state championship banners are displayed in their rightful location, but our state champions from 2011 and 2013 are not recognized in the wall of honor in our gymnasium. I wonder what our parents must think to see our athletes having to coach themselves because we have no paid staff. Living in a town like Cheshire, educational budgets are often passed because we, as a community, value academic and extracurricular activities. It is a mark on our reputation as an inclusive and caring community when other schools in our league do not take us seriously because we are not varsity sport. Remember, what we permit, we promote. Students and their families are disenfranchised because our failure to recognize the hard work, dedication, and commitment of these student athletes. Now, our Board of Ed and Dr. Solon recognize this injustice and have answered the call to right the wrong that has occurred for nearly 20 years. In case somebody didn't know, Cheshire fencing's been around for 20 years. The time is now to act. By recognizing fencing as a varsity sport, you will not only affect the current fencers in our program, but you also validate athletes and their sacrifices from the past and ensure that future fencers are not marginalized. I thank you for your time and pray the Town Council passes a full proposed education budget that includes officially designating fencing as a varsity sport for the next fiscal year. Now, I was challenged by someone to produce people for the Board of Education budget here at our business meeting about six months ago, and I can do that again if need be on April 16th, I believe that was the date that was on the board. So again, I thank you for your time and listening to it when needs be said.
Thank you very much.
I made it to the correct meeting this time, if you remember from last week. I just had one question for Mr. Kimball. You know, I, as you all know, I mess around with spreadsheets and stuff like that, and if you took this year's budget, fiscal '24 budget, and recalculated the mill rate from 35.09, do you know what it would be, using the, you know, the new revaluation?
If you give me just a second, I can pull up my mill rate spreadsheet and probably do that.
Okay. So I just wanted to see if I was right, that's all.
So just to be, you're, yeah. So you're asking, just to be clear, that if, if the mill rate instead stayed at 35.09 on the new grand list?
No.
Would the total be, or what do you, what do you?
No, if the, excuse me, if the current re, sorry.
Gets choked up about spreadsheets.
I hear that.
It's allergy season, everyone. If the, if the current mill rate, 35.09, is recalculated using the new revaluation grand list, what would it drop to?
Oh, it drops to 26-something. In other words, before, Sean, before you add on the increase for this year's budget?
Exactly.
What does the mill rate drop to?
Got it.
And it's 20, it's 26-something, I believe.
26?
Yeah, it's around, yeah, I can, yeah, let me.
It may be higher than that, then.
Because I was only just using my own house, so it's obviously not at average, I just wanted to see.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I'll have to get, you know, I, I'll get you something, yeah, around 26.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Grippo, I, I know that you, that you appeared at our meeting a week ago. During your comments that night, you mentioned that you had some cuts if people were interested. I did email you and ask for what your proposed cuts are, so if, I don't know if you're prepared to do so tonight, but, and strictly for education, I know, is what you were, what you were, I believe, referring to. But if you have some of those and are prepared to speak to those tonight, I'd love to hear them, or if not, if you could send them to me?
I am not prepared to speak to those tonight? And you said you emailed me?
Yeah, I emailed your.
My Board of Ed email, or?
Your Board of Ed email.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I must have missed that.
Okay.
My.
Yeah, but if you would send those, I'd love to take a look at them.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
And just to support Mr. Palladino, correct? Yes, we've been working on policy to get that all going, so hopefully this year or next year, we'll see what happens, right, Dr. Solon? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo.
Or just quickly, I guess, and answered, it would be, the mill rate would be 26.24 mils for a flat, what would be otherwise a flat average taxing.
Were you right?
No.
Were you higher or lower?
Lower. I think it's my own house.
Okay.
Yeah, this is based on average house for all 11,000 houses.
And before I, before I turn the meeting over to our Budget Chair, and Dr. Solon, if you, you can do this just with a nod of the head, I believe the current budget that you have as it stands includes fencing as a varsity sport, is that correct?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Budget Chair, Mr. Jinks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think in, in the interest of moving things along, Mr. Solon, if you're, or Dr. Solon, if you're ready, we're eager to hear what you have to say.
I also have a presentation this evening, so you're getting your calisthenics in, if you don't mind relocating.
Is it, it works for you? Is yours in, is, the one you're doing, Jeff, is it in the?
No.
John, you have a question for?
No, not for that, just, just following back on, and I know it might not be the right time, but I just had a question. I know we're going to go through a workshop on your budget, Sean, and I, and, in listening to it and having reviewed it, I noticed the revaluation was heavily, was, there was a heavy increase on condominiums in the town. Generally, those are less expensive residences, and those people will seem to pay a higher percentage of the tax increases. And I was just, the only question I have is, is it, is it appropriate, or is it okay to ask our, our, our people who've done this assessment to why that has occurred and get some background on that, because it seems like that is a little bit, is just out of whack in terms of impact on, on residents?
Yeah, I can certainly show, I mean, I think when you see the values, like on the old list for the last five years, the average condo was assessed under $90,000, I think it was. So I think, and it's definitely a fair point, certainly for that, those individuals, difference delta between what they were paying the year before, and it is different now. It's not necessarily, just to clarify, it's not a lion's share of the overall revenue increase, right? It's that dollar amount is much lower than it is on the average, say, colonial property value. So dollar for dollar, it may be different. But yes, we can certainly provide, I think we will see that dating back five years ago at least, and what it's evolved to.
Just, just, just because, I mean, I think some of those people maybe have more difficulty, maybe more of our ugly people who live in condominiums, et cetera, and they're going to be impacted more significantly than other people, and I think it's worth at least exploring it and understanding it, so, thank you.
Yeah, I could just add, I mean, that would.
Also include new construction, and I, I guess that was part of the question, is how much of that is a result of new construction of condos in recent years, and those would be higher valued than ones that were assessed years prior. So there's, I'm wondering what the differences between high and low.
Combination of both. There are certainly, and I've talked to some individuals who called when they got their revaluation notices, who knew they bought, had, one woman, we spoke for a while, had a great conversation about it, but she, her house, her condo, when she bought it a year ago, was, was on the old list at $100,000. She got an assessment that said it was $190,000. She called acknowledging she paid $230,000. So it was, but the difference was huge, it was about 80 percent. So those, those have, but there are certainly some examples also where we have brand-new values that are coming on at 400,000 or so, and are skewing some of it. So it'd be worth looking at that.
It was just nice to understand that, because it seems like it impacted.
Absolutely. Is it still not, I assume it's not showing?
There's nothing on it. You gonna try again?
I mean, sure.
How can we lie?
We're bad guys with a bigger budget, right? They're, they're a lot now. It's not yet, it hasn't, it hasn't even gone to a blue screen yet, so it's not, it's not ready.
Actually, Grant? Well, maybe, hopefully, fingers crossed.
Should be on A, I think. Just for fun.
No. Sorry.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everybody, I'll just jump in. I'm Jeff Solon, Superintendent of the Cheshire Public Schools. This is my first opportunity to present in person with most of you, or many of you, and so it's a pleasure to be here. I want to take a moment before I kick things off to acknowledge our Board of Education. Mr. Grippo is obviously here this evening. Unfortunately, Ms. Rosenberg is traveling for work and couldn't be here, but the team spent a lot of time over the course of the month of January, several multi-hour meetings going through our budget with incredible scrutiny, and I think at the end settled at a, at a place that makes a lot of fiscal and operational sense. I also want to thank Mr. Mastiana, who coordinates a lot of this work, and is a tremendous asset to, to our team, as well as the members of, of his team and our administration, who pour a lot of time into not just developing these budgets, but making the budget come to life, and as meaningful as can be for the students, children, and, you know, the families in this community. So, without further ado, there's a little bit of, of education that goes into this, knowing that a lot of you are seeing these, this presentation from the Board of Ed for the first time. Talked, talking a little bit about board member responsibilities. It's a little washed out in the back, but you see Mr. Grippo's photos in there somewhere. The board has responsibilities that are outlined in general statute, as you can see. My responsibilities, really to collaborate with district leaders and design that fiscally responsible but effective budget that I was talking about, really for the advancement of Board of Education goals. What we provide, I mean, I think it can be easy to lose sight of the breadth of service that school system is responsible for, not just the high-quality instruction, of course, that's the first that probably comes to mind, but we also have to focus on the physical well-being of our students, the emotional well-being of our students, support, support services, and a variety of diverse experiences, as Mr. Palladino mentioned, outside of the classroom, to support our kids in their full growth. And then, of course, there's transportation to and from school. So there's really quite a breadth that we cover in, in our budget. I mentioned implementing the board's goals. In 2017, we adopted two goals. There was a lot of time and energy spent with the community, with parents, with business leaders in the community, of course, our teachers and students as well. And we identified two important goals, supporting students as complex thinkers and supporting students as social-emotional learners. Before that time, we had literally 16 goals, and nobody could really define all 16. I mean, if you tattooed four on me, I probably still wouldn't know them, you know, there, it was just too unwieldy. And we've really focused our efforts, and you're going to see a little bit later on kind of what's happened to our subsequent performance and achievement. But when we make decisions about our budget to this day, how will this advance complex thinking? How will this advance social-emotional learning? And those are critical considerations when we make modifications to our budget. So the budget environment, I mean, Sean alluded to a number of different factors. There are a lot of internal factors within Cheshire. Student enrollment, to nobody's surprise, continues to climb, as we talk about new houses and condos coming on the market, contractual increases. We just re-upped a vendor contract for transportation that was really a steal over the last several years, and now it's just more market, it's still a very good deal, but it's just more reflective of the market. So there was a shift in that line. Special education costs continue to rise across America, not just in Cheshire, but does impact us locally, and medical benefits, we'll talk a little bit about. And of course, there are the external factors that we also, you know, pay close attention to. Our per pupil expenditure. So I get asked a lot about this, this is how much does the district spend in terms of its operating budgets, literal expenditures on the, on the operating budget, that's why it's, you know, lagging 22, 23. It's not just the approved budget, it's what was expended, divided by the number of students. And so you can see Cheshire spent in 22, 3, $19,189 per student against the state average. That's a difference of roughly $2,500 per student. We ranked 109th out of 166 communities in that spending. So if we spent the, the state average, our budget would increase by $10 million. And if we look at DURG-B, which I'll explain a little bit what that is later, $5.5 million more. DURG-B are really our peer communities, but that's a pretty significant number, you know? And then when you consider that it's, it's annual, I think, you know, one of the things that Sean mentioned in his presentation was value. And I would consider that to be great service at a cost-effective price, and I, I think you're going to see that throughout, resonating throughout this presentation. So our budget last year, 84.9. This year, my presentation to the board initially was $90,001,322.65. That was a 6.05% increase. I mentioned the amount of time and energy the board put into deliberating the budget before coming up with a 5.97% increase at $90 million. I think it's noteworthy, which is why I call it out here, the medical benefit increase alone is more than $1 million. So, you know, absent the, the benefits piece and the, you know, substantial increase in the cost of benefits, our budget would have come in at 4.72%. That's the, that's the board-approved budget would have come in at 4.72. So what are the driving factors? Again, we, we talked a little bit about regular special education staffing. You know, these things are reflective of our growth. Sean mentioned elementary classes, elementary enrollment being 30 students higher, I'm going to update you on that. Higher wages exacerbated by the minimum wage increase. You know, there's, there's obviously been a greater than 50% shift over the last five years in the minimum wage, which impacts our workforce and is reflected a little bit in our budget. Medical benefits, I've, I might have mentioned it already, maybe twice or three times, but I think that's something that impacts all of us, obviously. And then, of course, the facilities operating costs, which I'm excited that in '26, when we open two new buildings and close three of our oldest facilities, we're looking at, you know, opportunities there to save on some of those capital costs Sean addressed. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but it's illustrative. Mike Liddon gave us these, he's the town planner, and I just want to highlight some things. I'm going to just rifle through them, so if you don't process them, these are his slides, 70 apartments, 20 homes, six apartments, 20 homes, 13. These are all online, coming online right now. So at the bottom of the screen, you can see that a total of 603 new units being added. Some of them are, are online already. 188 units are single-family home projects with four or more homes, 188 homes being added in the community. And for those of you who are new, this would be a, a new line, but I know a lot of people have heard me say, people don't move here for the nightlife. You heard Mr. Palladino talk about the attraction that our school system presents for people, and of course, you know, I can imagine that we'll have a lot of folks who move into town to take advantage of the services and the value that we have here in this community. Just as a little bit of background on medical benefits, we're self-insured, and so when the bills come in, Cheshire Public Schools pays the bills, right? And the same for the town. The Board of Ed side, our target is to have two months claims balance. That would amount to about 1, excuse me, $2.3 million, a little more than $2.3 million. Right now, we're at 1.64 months claims balance, or, excuse me, as of November 30th, I said right now, but we're in that neighborhood. The budget that we're talking about today, the $1 million-plus increase for medical benefits, does not seek to bring that to two months claims balance. It maintains the, the balance that we have now, and now that can ebb and flow a little bit, you know, we, we've been up close to three months, we've been down under a month. It ebbs and flows throughout the year, but I think one of the things that has gotten the community in trouble before is when it gets up over two months, we try and take that savings and apply it to the operating budget, and then it dips and you find yourself in significant trouble. Or when it gets really low, the, the cost of, you know, funding the pool again is problematic. So one of the things that we've collectively agreed upon over the years is to really fund the expected claim rate. That's the safest way to budget this on both sides of the street, I'm, I'm sure, but I know for us, you know, with two months, we just want to make sure that we can fund the claim rate, so we try not to, to mess with that. So, you know, breaking the budget down, I mean, this budget is really about maintaining current services, and you'll see, you know, in another graph, to what degree I mean by that. Our school system is growing significantly, and so to maintain class-size averages, we need to add staff to do this. Cheshire Public Schools, all of education is very labor-intensive. The, the bulk of our budget is people, which, you know, costs money. Special education services, it's critical, actually legally binding that we maintain services. The medical benefit funding, I just kind of talked a little bit about why that's important to maintain. Elementary supervision and support and secondary math support post-COVID are items that weren't necessarily part of our operating budget, but we, we had these people through federal funding, the ARPAS or money. And we took a very strategic approach to how we were spending our ARPAS or money, focusing a lot on professional development. We called it our bounce-forward plan, because if we hire three math people, let's say, and they can support 100 students a year for three years until that money ran out, well, then 900 students benefited over that time. If we invest in high-quality professional development for 400 people over three years, the benefit is to 4,200 students really in perpetuity. Let's say it's, that PD is valid for 10 years. Now you're, you're serving, you know, 42,000 as opposed to 900, which is dramatically different. So we really focused on professional growth, but our enrollment dictated elementary supervision support had to be increased. We have gone from about 700 students at Highland to about 900, and so you'll see that support there. And then the secondary math support post-COVID, and I'll show you why that's valuable momentarily. There's a bit of a moderate increase to address building and equipment issues. And then the advancement is indeed the fencing program. And the other element that the board considered to be important and timely was elementary pre-engineering and environmental science. So what this program is, in grades four and five, we would have push-in lessons for all students on pre-engineering skills and environmental science, just like it says. And why is that relevant? That, you know, when you, oh, it's, I don't know why this isn't projecting on the screen, but what I have is a link, and if, you know, I'll share the PowerPoint with you, and you can certainly go on and check it out, but it talks about the 10 college degrees with the best starting salaries, physicians' assistance studies, operations research in industrial engineering, petroleum engineering, nuclear engineering, operations research, metallurgical engineering, computer science and engineering, computer engineering, medicine, aeronautics, and astronautics. So obviously, you know, you're picking up on that science theme, and we know that these are skills that are in super-high demand, and we think it's important to expose our kids to these skills in an engaging way at a young age, so that they can best leverage opportunities that exist at the middle school and at the high school level to further their education in that respect, if that's a passion that gets ignited. And so that was something that, you know, the board thought was important to include in this, in this budget. So the bounce-forward plan, as I mentioned, we have about 300 more elementary students than we did pre-COVID, and our academic needs remain high. So when I said that, you know, we were paying for these things as intensive supports during the post-COVID years, this as being the last of the three, the enrollment is such that we have felt the, the need to maintain that ratio, like the same post-ratio, or same ratios we had pre-pandemic, in the hiring of a reading and math specialist that supports predominantly Highland and, and a little bit of Darcy, in maintaining our high school and middle school math people. So this was the projected enrollment slide that I showed in January. It, it shows our October 1 enrollment, which was above our projection. The January 10 enrollment, when we initiated the budget process, we had gone up over all 34 students. And then you see at the bottom line, the 42, 24, is our total enrollment projection for next year. So we get that projection in, like, December. At this point, as of March 18th, we have 4,213 enrolled students. So we're, we have a net gain of 45 students over the course of the current school year, and we're only 12 students from exceeding next year's projection already. I would not be surprised, I would actually anticipate, by the end of the spring, by June, we already exceed our projected enrollment, and it'll, it's likely to grow based on those maps I showed you even further over the summer. I don't think we're in a compromised position, that we're going to grow so much, I would be surprised that, you know, we have to hire, but we have been that, in that position before, where we've had to hire over the summer, and we figure it out. This is a, a longer, drawn-out longitudinal map of the, the enrollment growth. The red arrow showing... The red arrow showing, you know, last couple of years, the elementary growth is projected. So in our budget overall, where are the net staffing changes? There is a decrease at Chapman because of enrollment. Now, I've already unilaterally moved some north-end streets that are coming online from Highland to Chapman because, as I mentioned, our enrollment there is nine hundred students already. And so we're diverting kids now who will, when the new schools open, end up moving to the new school anyway. So we're taking a whole neighborhood at a time and moving them to Chapman now before kids move in. We're not moving kids that are existing Highland students because it just, that wouldn't feel right. But I don't want them to make multiple transitions in the course of their elementary grades. But if they are, you know, new to the community, we move them unilaterally to Chapman. Nevertheless, we're reducing a teacher there. We're increasing an elementary teacher at Doolittle and Highland, Norton. We're increasing our intensive education classroom support. We have built on the programs we offer at Highland because we find we do it better, you know, more effectively, more efficiently. And it's better for students to be in their neighborhood community. So we're spreading that out between two buildings. There's a cost for that. Maintaining the math coach at the middle and high school level that we brought on through ARPASR, the reading and math specialist at Highland, again, due to the dramatically increased enrollment there. The two science positions to facilitate the pre-engineering and environmental science program. And then the language arts teacher, we are reducing one at, at, excuse me, that's not language arts. It's world languages, German program being reduced at the middle school. But we'll continue for eighth graders at the middle school and for students at the high school. So you can see in the narrative below that a lot of this is dictated by enrollment growth and that, you know, we're trying to maintain insert, in-district service for special education supports. And I wanted to show you a little bit about, you know, what the impact of math coaches are. So the bottom black line, the chart that's plotted there is math scores relative to grade-level expectations for the state of Connecticut. And you can see from 2016 to 2023, the COVID dip is what you see from nineteen to twenty-two, where significant student achievement was lost during that time. On average in Connecticut, they're just about to grade-level standard. Now, the orange line up top is Cheshire's performance. In 2017, we began focusing on complex thinking and social-emotional learning. I think the first thing I did when I became superintendent is pull people together to identify what those goals were. And the board really focused on that. At the, at the time, we, pre-pandemic, we had a record-high performance in 2019 for math. Obviously, like most, felt the impact of the pandemic. And last year, we outperformed our old high. But we focus a lot on providing math support at the middle and high school grades to ensure that, you know, that continues through those grade levels. Additional enrollment in non-certified staffing. We had to add a paraprofessional for the intensive ed program at Norton. As Sean mentioned, when items get added through the course of the year, those weren't in last year's budget. Our special ed needs were such that we had to include six point eight paraeducators through the course of this year for special education support services. And those are rolled into next year's budget. We added two cafeteria aides at Highland because of the significant increase in size there for safety and supervision. We actually had a cafeteria aide provide the Heimlich maneuver and save a child at Highland, paraeducator actually, who was in there. So that supervision is important. An additional cafeteria aide at Dod, as much as our enrollment isn't growing at Dod necessarily yet, the state legislature changed the lunch period from twenty-five minutes to thirty minutes. And if you've ever had lunch with twelve thirteen-year-olds, let alone two hundred, it gets kind of rambunctious. My great friend of mine, Don Wolonis, the former principal at Dod for many years, would always tell me, if the doctor said I had one day to live, I'd want to spend it on calf duty because it feels like eternity. And so what we're trying to do is be creative about how we employ our support staff there and pull kids out. When a thirteen-year-old boy eats his lunch in twelve minutes and has, you know, eighteen minutes of downtime, that's a recipe for a problem. So we're looking at, how do we pull kids out, give them alternative activities during lunch if they want? Just spreading people out and making it more productive than can be destructive at times. We added additional Board of Ed bus driver. That brings some costs down for us, actually, in terms of what we'd be contracting out. It's cheaper to hire our own person. And then part-time special ed consult services at Highland, given the significant volume. I appreciate that this can be really difficult to read, but the gist of it is that our current, or at least as of October first, our class-size averages were eighteen point seven across all the sections at the elementary grades. Next year's projected with those positions we added is eighteen point eight, which is, you know, statistically the same as it is now. But it's actually literally the same because our enrollment has gone up that much at the elementary grades that it's, it's at least eighteen point eight now. So it's, again, about maintaining the services that we already offer. It's not about necessarily enhancing anything. You can see on this graph, or this chart, excuse me, twenty-four, twenty-five, the class-size averages roughly the same as they are, actually a drop higher in seventh grade next year and just a shade lower in eighth grade. So again, maintaining the services that we currently offer. I mentioned DURG-B earlier, that's District Reference Group B. And so there's a data set, you know, about median income and education levels and home values and all these factors that go into, how do we cluster communities in Connecticut in similar groups? So what you see on the left here is the current District Reference Group B. This was updated a few years ago. And in case anybody has a history with this terminology, that's the old district reference groups. These are groups that have either, districts that weren't in the old DURG-B, but either now are, or they've moved out. And you can see the old and the new there. But really, we're focused on, these are our peer communities and the color-coded map is there. So in terms of our students per educator, Cheshire High School smack in the middle of DURG-B. Actually, in order to get here to where Amity High School is, we'd have to add sixteen teachers to have the same student-teacher ratio that Amity has. Multiply the sixteen out by eighty thousand dollars, more than a million dollars in our budget right there. So if you're wondering where that delta is between the five point five million dollars on average less that we spend, I mean, that's, that's one place, you know, relative to some of these, these districts in here. CPS class-size trend data, so this is really the history of the elementary class sizes. In seventeen, we were seventeen point nine. You can see unfortunately with our budgets, we've crept up here, eighteen point eight next year. And then at the middle school, it kind of fluctuates because of teaming. It's a little harder to be precise with the certifications for teachers. But it stays within a general range. So advancement, this is the percentage of our budget that is dedicated to advancement. The pie chart here really says it all. Advancement in our budget as a percentage is point zero zero three. So the fact that you can see any sliver there at all is generous. And this is the fiscal impact for the addition of fencing. You can see the fiscal impact for the addition of the pre-engineering and environmental science programs. Budget increase by percentage, I don't have to read you each piece of this. But again, medical benefits, at twenty-one percent is our largest increase by segment of our, our increase. And then, you know, enrollment-related salaries, the positions that we added to maintain class sizes and services is seventeen percent. Teacher salaries overall is seventeen percent increase. That's the steps and positions and everything that we have in our budget. And those are the marquee drivers. Central office support, that's not a place where we could look to reduce staff. So this is the, this is not DURG-B, this is the entire state of Connecticut with, with DURG-B. This is the state of Connecticut rank right here. Amount of central office personnel and the rank in Connecticut. We are one sixty-seven out of a hundred and sixty-seven school systems in Connecticut in terms of our number of students per central office staff members, which is why Ben looks so tired all the time. Our recommended budget by category, I said we're people, business, eighty-one percent is salaries and benefits, support services, instructional expense, and maintenance. These are shrinking pieces of the pie. If you look at our budget book, which is available online, there is tremendous detail in the budget book. I know that you have copies available, but it's, there are a lot of charts and graphs in there that tell a story of, of our history, and it's quite interesting. So the increases by category, again, it's salary and benefits, the lion's share. And you can see much more muted increases in the other areas, instructional, supply, excuse me, maintenance and support services. How does our budget request compare to DURG-B and to our community? This is a phenomenon that's playing out through Connecticut. So in DURG-B, those towns that I was just showing you, four of the superintendent's budgets came in between four and five, you know, five and six percent, or six percent roughly, six and seven, seven and eight. And then this is where the Board of Ed has adopted those budgets. The reason these numbers are a little smaller than the numbers over here is because not everybody has either had their board adoption yet or they just haven't posted it where I could see it online. These are the surrounding towns. These are the superintendent proposals. These are the Board of Ed-adopted budgets. So, I mean, I think you could see we compare at least on par with our peers and favorably to surrounding towns with respect to our budget, depending on how you look at it. Our projected revenue for next year, educational cost share, these are all things that are standard, you know, pieces of the budget. These are things that go directly to the town. So when you ask like, is our budget really a hundred million, but you deduct this ten? No, the, our spending budget is ninety million and the town gets ten back. So it's, it nets out to eighty. But we present our budget annually on what our expenditures are, the operating budget, and we tell you what to anticipate in terms of revenue. Our achievement, talked a little bit about our achievement. How, you, you see how we, how we compare to our peers with respect to spending. Again, if we took the nineteen and we moved it to the average and multiplied it by the number of students we have, that would be a five-million-dollar budget increase, five and a half million. So we do represent an excellent value. We're one of the top ten performing school districts in the state of Connecticut overall. I'll show you an interesting slide on that momentarily. Our schools often are recognized for their success academically, athletically, theatrically, musically. Our special services are, are often recognized. And so there's really a lot to be proud of in providing a well-rounded opportunity for the kids in our community and the families in our community. So this is the District Performance Index, the most recent one that was issued. It shows a variety of measures. It takes into account everything from chronic absenteeism, math, science, language arts achievement, special ed services, how the students of free and reduced lunch perform. A lot of different variables that go into the sauce here. And you can see that Cheshire ranked ninth in the state of Connecticut. Again, our, our spending not commensurate with our performance was, which is exceptionally high. And so we're, we're really proud of the effort that our people put in and the results we get. Niche.com, I don't put a lot of eggs in this basket because it's not, you know, psychometrically, it's not the most statistically valid, you know, measure of performance. But it is something that people who seek to move to this community pay attention to. So I figured I'd report it. This is 2024, our national ranking, even pre-pandemic, has gone from five, six, or, you know, midst of pandemic to now. Our Connecticut ranking is up to eleventh in terms of niche.com. You know, really some things like diversity that we don't have a ton of control over, obviously. Resources and facilities is something that I anticipate soon to be substantially improving. That's not something that we control in the operating budget, but the community is really invested in and we're excited about that. So I'm sure our niche ranking will even continue to improve. Again, excellent value. We were just recently recognized at Highland for outstanding school climate. We've had the best, literally the best buddy, top-best buddies chapter in America before. We have had a lot of incredible recognition that our students and staff have worked really hard to earn. One of the cooler things I've ever seen is we had twenty high school students that were collaborating on projects that were way over my head with kids from the National Science High School in Seoul. And so I joined them for a really early morning joint meeting. Our high school kids just get up and we're collaborating with kids from South Korea on science projects. They hope next year to present at the Science Festival in Seoul. So our kids have really awesome opportunities as part of this budget and this vision that we have in our community and the value that attracts people to this community and maintains housing values and everything else. I mean, I, you know, again, I jokingly say that people don't move here for the nightlife, but there is research that illustrates, you know, when school districts perform well and high-performing districts, I think in part because of people who move here with affluence. But again, it reinforces itself that we do a great job and more people move here and pay more for houses. That's the reality of it. So again, you know, this is really our destination, complex thinking and social-emotional learning. This is what we are hyper-focused on all the time. And if there's one thing I really want you to walk away with, is that we're focused on complex thinking, social-emotional learning, and making sure that all of our kids find success in those domains. So key takeaways, this is a thriving community where people want to live. We're growing. We're growing. And I think, you know, I have to commend Sean and you guys, all the stuff that you're doing that makes this town that much more attractive, from North End Development to Bartlam Park to, I forget the other park project that you guys are working on, building new schools, replacing outdated facilities. So it's a vibrant place. And, you know, we're excited about that growth. And so, again, there are three elements to our budget. One is the operating budget that, you know, obviously I just reviewed. There's school modernization, which from a fiscal perspective in our operating budget has nothing to do with our operating budget at this time. I'm sure when we consolidate schools and new buildings come online, there will be influences that will be felt in the operating budget, but not in the current budget. And then finally, there's our capital budget. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Maciana, our chief operating officer, to come up and share. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sol, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here presenting to the town council as always. I'm going to go back one slide, and my presentation is very brief. I just want to put some context around the capital budget and our facilities that I, I think will be helpful, especially for our newest town council members. So in our operating budget, we have about four point eight million dollars for the maintenance of our facilities. If you look at that four point eight million dollars, though, about two point five million is for utilities, heat, and cleaning the buildings. So we have, if you subtract that, about two point three million dollars to maintain and repair our buildings. And so the capital budget is an important component of the overall maintenance of our facilities. This is our school building profile, or what it will be in twenty twenty-six when the two new schools are built. So in twenty twenty-six, I, I'm sure everyone knows that we'll have a new Norton Elementary School and a new North End Elementary School. But these five buildings will remain as, as part of our building fleet for the schools. You could see that, you know, at this point, they're aged, then they'll continue to age. Obviously, we maintain the buildings and we'll, we'll continue to maintain them as long as we have them. And so in a minute, you'll see what we're requesting in the capital budget to support that. The three schools that will be coming offline when the new schools are built are Darcy, Chapman, and Norton. The one thing that we'd certainly expect will happen when we have the new buildings is that we won't be spending any significant dollars for, you know, maintenance and repair in those buildings, nor will we be requesting any capital funding of any magnitude for the new buildings because we'll get twenty years out of the roofs and all the other systems in those new buildings. What this shows is the five-year capital request. I know we're not going to be spending time on it during this round. We're focusing on the operating budget. But this gives you a little bit of context around the dollars being requested by building, the high school being our biggest building. Doolittle, there's some significant investments, thirteen point three million. But we are looking to get Doolittle on par with Highland and the two new elementary schools that will have full air conditioning and double-pane windows and all the other features that new schools and Highland have, has. Highland is fully air-conditioned. So that's why Doolittle is such a significant chunk. Dod, also a large building, as is Highland, eleven million and seven million. And then district-wide are just projects that are not necessarily allocated to one building, but all the school buildings. So that's the view by building. And again, you'll see that we've not allocated any funding for these buildings that are coming offline, and there's nothing requested for central office and homestand. We will get to those buildings at some point, but they're not in this capital budget. Now we're looking at the same fifty-five million dollars with just a, a view on, well, what are the major components of the capital request? So about nineteen point two million is HVAC, eight point nine million window replacements, paving, roofing, sidewalk, and masonry improvements over five years, about seven point four million. Improvements to the calves, and, and you could see the rest do decrease off that. All important items to keep our buildings maintained and safe, structurally sound. These are the investments that need to be made over the five years. The funding request for twenty-four, twenty-five, so this is the one-year request. And the town council, although they approve a five-year capital plan, I know you know that only year one is appropriated and funded. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, the request is one point one two million. Four roofing, sidewalk, masonry improvements, building and grounds improvement, seven seventy-five. These slices get progressively smaller. HVAC window, floor, ceiling, door, roof ladder replacements. Again, there's no frills here, things that we need to maintain our buildings and, and keep everything in good repair.
Actually, I would just build on that to say that beyond no frills, the state is requiring school systems to evaluate their HVAC components and update them. Those are, there was a lot of pushback from districts because they were asking all districts to review all buildings in one year and then start to fix them. Well, there just aren't enough vendors to do every school in Connecticut. The prices skyrocketed. It was a disaster. And so right now, the legislature is working on manipulating that. But at the end of the day, we're still going to be required to do a lot of this work. The other thing is reimbursement rates. The state has issued several grants for HVAC work. And so that's, that's a factor in that, you know, some of these things may have a sticker price, but then we have reimbursement on those as well.
Thank you, Jeff. It's really a little bit hard to see what that is, but that is actually a scope of inside one of the waste pipes at Cheshire High School. And you see these little things in there. And you wonder what they are, so I'm going to just cut to the chase. Anybody know what those things are? About that box full of them. Those are vape cartridges that, yeah, yeah. You know, and the point of this slide is just to give you an illustration of the types of things that we just need to maintain and repair in the building. So, you know, too many of these tend to clog the waistline, which causes a backup, which causes us to get, you know, the rotor router to come in and clear the line and deal with the backup. So these are the types of things that we're battling through this, after school year. And so the two point three million in the operating budget covers these types of issues. But the capital budget, really, those are long-term investments in the buildings. And again, they're, they're critical for a number of reasons. This picture doesn't do it great justice, but this is Cheshire High School before we made some improvements last year. These are single-pane glass windows. This storefront was really well past its prime. And you could see the lighting is kind of shadowy here. There's actually a couple of fixtures out because these are incandescent bulbs, which burn out regularly, that our maintenance staff constantly has to chase. And so with the capital funding that was approved for window replacements and lighting, this is what it looked like after the improvements were made, where we have, you know, much more attractive. These are green, it doesn't show up in the picture as well. But if you want to go drive past the old main office at Cheshire High School, you'll see that the lighting is much more even. It's LED lights that are in here, so we won't need to replace them. Fifty thousand hours of use, which is, you know, probably about twenty years. So these are the types of investments that we make. Obviously, the windows are much more energy efficient. So in addition to being aesthetically better, keeps the temperature inside cooler during the summer and warmer during the winter. So it does reduce our overall cost of, you know, providing heat and cooling in that building. And that really is the long and short of the capital budget. I'm sure we're going to be dealing with this in much more detail, although maybe not tonight. Thank you.
Certainly, happy to say, I think we've had enough words, but welcome any questions that anybody might have about anything, I know.
Before, before we head back to the, the other side to
Sure.
continue the discussion, could you go to the, the slide you had on per pupil expense? Kind of a historic look on per pupil expense?
This guy?
Yeah. What was, what was the difference between eighteen, nineteen? What was the huge jump for? Do you, can you provide any narrative behind that? Or, because you, you go from like nine twenty difference per student, from nine twenty-five, and then it increased by, you know, two thousand?
I think it, it can be, I do, I can't answer that off the top of my head, other than to say, no.
The state average went?
Sure.
You know?
Yeah, it went, it went significantly up.
And nuts that year or something?
I'm trying to remember if there were any variables going into nineteen, twenty. Obviously, that was pre-pandemic. Yeah, I'm not sure. I could go back and try and look at that, but yeah, there was a substantial jump.
That's a, that's a big jump for a state average.
Right. So, I mean, obviously, the two marquee variables that influence this are, how much did the district spend? And those are all one hundred and sixty-seven districts on the average. And how many pupils do you have? So, you know, you look at a place like South Windsor, which is the fastest-growing community in Connecticut, right? That has, they've seen huge jumps in the number of folks. A lot of them are international contracted workers through a tech firm in Hartford, and they've seen massive jumps. So their, their per pupil expenditure often falls because what happens is that the money went up, but they were growing with so many students that the, the denominator was going up at a high enough rate, that it was showing small increments of growth and lower per pupil expenditure. That's why you see now, you know, they have a budget increase of seven point eight percent, something. It's in that neighborhood, it was on the slides. But, you know, those are the two marquee factors. But I'm not sure why the state would have grown so much at that point. I don't, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. Because it's, it's operating costs, so the reimbursement really doesn't factor into it too much. So I'd have to go back and take a look at that.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, why, you know, what changed during those years.
You got anything?
I suggested that one-to-one devices, Chromebooks, that's what we are in our district. And everything jumped up because each kid had to get a device.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what really tipped us off.
Could be a factor. Any other questions that anybody has that I might not be able to answer?
Yeah, do you want to put the lights on and go back to, back in?
Donnie, I know you had a question we could, when you get, do you need it on the slide?
No, I'll, I'll ask it when I get around.
Okay. I turned it off already. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Sol. I have a few questions, but I'll defer for now. Don, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just had one question for now. I mean, we've all heard about the state mandate with the reading curriculum. That's not included in this budget, from what I understand. And what happens, I know you're still trying to fight that, but if, if that doesn't, if, if we still are forced to do that, do you have to come back to us? Or is, are you going to have, or is this going to be for next year's?
Next year. The, the implementation is required now for two thousand twenty-five. And so that would really be an issue for next year's operating budget. Something I get emotional about, like adamant spreadsheets, but I don't want to take up another half hour of your time.
So we, we don't have to worry about that this year, except
Right.
you need to keep fighting the state on that because obviously we have some, a pretty good curriculum that's already working well in our community, I see, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just was wondering, will we get a copy of that presentation? Will you email it to us? I didn't see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure.
And forgive me, Jeff, I, I, I will admit to not having cracked your, your full budget yet. So some of my answers may be in here. But if you could give us just some context around it. The enrollment projections and kind of historically, do you have, that's probably in the enrollment tab. That I remember having seen in the past.
And I certainly don't mind answering questions, but there is a sheet in our budget book that has this massive table, and it shows you every year going back twenty-plus years. And it shows birth year, enrollment
Yeah.
and then every grade level. And it is projected, you know, probably twenty, twenty years in the rears and ten years forward or so. And there's a lot of, like I said, there's so much information in our budget book that any, you know, nuance or detail is probably there. That being said, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, Vin and I look at this all the time for the last ten years together. You don't have that benefit. And don't ever hesitate to email us questions, you know, just send it to me, send it to Sean, whatever works for you. And the same would go for the public, too. Anybody has a question, we want to try and, and answer that. If you want to talk about transparency, this book has everything. Like, there's really nothing that we couldn't, you know, think of to put in there. So Vin, I don't know if you want to add, it looks like you want to add something.
What would we do with that, you know, well, thank you. Just a couple of quick comments that I wanted to make. The, you know, this year's enrollment as of, as of October was about forty-one hundred sixty-eight students. Next year is projected to go to forty-two, twenty-four, but we're already close to the forty-two, twenty-four.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think there's any surprise that the number of new housing units that are coming online, that's increasing the student counts. In fact, related to that, one thing that we didn't mention is that at Highland, we're just under nine hundred students. We are not going to make the next two years at Highland without having to do something. And we're adding two portables this summer. The council approved the, the capital budget last year, funding for that. We just went out to RFP. We got favorable quotes, so we're in the process of doing the design work. Then we'll go to planning and zoning and go through the process. But that's the only way we can sustain the, the students at Highland. We've already filled up the hallways even with learning support tutors, building out cubicles. So, you know, that is, that is one reality, that the enrollment is increasing. And the last thing that I'll mention is that if you look over the tenure projection, we're at forty-two hundred students now, we're projected at forty-eight, eighty-nine, ten years out. So the enrollment, you know, is expected to increase. It may not be a straight line, but I certainly think over the next couple of years, it's, it's going to start ratcheting up quickly. Highland, because it is the largest school and has the largest captive zone, is, is creating a particular problem there, as Dr. Solun mentioned. As Dr. Solon mentioned, the new development in, on the north end of town, even though it's slated for Highland, all new students will be going to Chapman, and we don't have much excess capacity at Chapman, Norton, or Doolittle at this point. So we'll figure it out as we always do, but it's gonna, um, it's gonna tighten up the number of, of students in, in all of our buildings until the new schools are built. And then when the new schools are built, we redistrict. Highland's population, as an example, will come down to about seven hundred twenty-five students because the new buildings do have more capacity than the ones that are coming offline.
So, uh, when I, when I look at the, when I look at the chart, um, and, and this is just an opportunity, Dr. Solon, to provide some context, not only for, for my colleagues, but for the, for the public. I'm just pulling up a random year and, and picking, um, what I believe is the, that's not quite the highest. But anyway, I looked at the year two thousand where the, the total number of students were fifty-one, fifty-five. And, you know, when you, when you look at this year, you can make the argument that we're down nine hundred students from, from that point. Where were we putting the extra nine hundred students and what's the difference between two thousand and twenty-twenty-four?
So the difference is, is really twofold. In two thousand, we, uh, did not offer full-day kindergarten. We had half-day K. So, uh, we may have had, you know, four hundred students in that grade, but only two hundred of them in the school at a time. So we doubled the classroom usage. We were one of the last districts in Connecticut to come on board with full-day K. And so that took up twice as many kindergarten classrooms as we used to have. The other thing that we've done is provide a lot, uh, more intensive special education services. One, because the needs have changed, um, across America and Connecticut over the last twenty-three years that you're citing. And so we have several classrooms dedicated to substantially, uh, impacted students. And so there, you know, they're only have four or five, maybe six kids in a classroom, uh, in some of those cases. And so there's, that takes space as well. Um, and the other thing that was different, you know, when I started in, uh, two thousand and five, we had about fifty-five hundred kids in the district, but Dodd was at nine hundred. When I worked at Cheshire High School, there were sixteen hundred kids there, middle and high school are significantly lower. Elementary is packed like it was back in the early two thousands and more so, um, in part because of some of the factors that I just mentioned. The other thing I wanted to address was the, um, the per pupil expenditure issue that you were talking about. The chart I showed starts in twenty eighteen, nineteen. In that year, we had a budget increase of, um, one point oh five percent, coming off of, uh, one point five seven. Uh, in, so there were substantially lower expenditures in Cheshire. That might've had a, had something to do with it.
Two more things, I believe. Special ed, um, excess cost revenue. So looking, looking at that, could I make the argument because it's been, well, it does go all over the place, huh? So it's been, the, the past couple of years, it's been seven oh five, seven forty-eight. The appropriated was, was half a mil, and right now it's projected at half a mil. Is that still holding or?
Yeah.
Do you know where that's gonna come in?
That's a conservative number, I think, the half a million. You know, it's, the, there were issues with how the legislature budgeted that in the current fiscal year. They're trying to remedy that next year. Um, I hope, assuming they do, um, they recognize the issue, that, that will be a, a higher level of revenue for us. I would venture a guess that, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars is not out of the question next year. But because it still is a question, uh, we tend to budget a little bit more conservatively and would say that five hundred thousand is, as I sit here today, uh, what I feel most comfortable telling you that you can expect.
The, um, on that, on that page and it's, uh, I don't have a page number, but it's under the, it's the first, under the revenue tab of the, of the book. There's a, the last column on the right is estimated twenty-four, twenty-five. That says six hundred thousand. Is that what you budgeted then, the, the six hundred K or did you budget the five?
No, we budgeted the six hundred.
The six.
Yeah.
And, and I'll just add, when we prepared the revenue budget, which is in November, and, um, since then, we've seen a lot. We've seen quite an increase in outplaced tuition, which is affecting our operating budget. So I think when the actual revenue comes in for twenty-three, twenty-four, Jim Jaskot will be very happy because it's gonna be higher than the five hundred thousand, and you know, that always makes Jim happy.
It does. Makes us happy too.
And, and actually based on, uh, our projections, it's closer to eight this year, uh, eight and change. So, you know, be coming in three hundred grand over projection, but the, the way that it gets budgeted sometimes through the, uh, folks in Hartford, and I'm not pinning this on the legislature, it, it, it can be a little bit of a roller coaster.
And, um, last but certainly not least, and, um, by the way, DraftKings had the over-under on your use of the term medical benefits trust fund tonight at, at six, and you only had five, by my count. So you were, you were on the under. Anybody that had the under was, uh, was a winner tonight for that.
Well, that's good. Unfortunately, I probably made up at it, and people don't move here for the nightlife though, so I'm, I'm probably a net zero on that. Yeah, Sean. Yeah, exactly.
I, I will tell you though, just a, as a, a total aside, my wife has the, uh, the, the T-shirt that has that, that phrase on it with the, the picture of the, the Cheshire in the map of Connecticut.
Our students designed it.
And she gets more favorable comments on that T-shirt than anything I've ever seen, so. That was, that was a winner.
Yeah, our students designed that. It's got the, uh, oh-six-four, uh, one O zip code on the back. And I had people looking to buy them at the Fall Festival. It's like, uh,
Yeah. It's a great, yeah.
Popular item.
Hey, revenue, revenue item.
Revenue, yeah. Gotta get our kids on that.
And this is probably, Mr. Maciana, is that, uh, are, you're the, you're the medical benefits trust guy. What, uh, what tab can I go under?
If you go to employee benefits, so it's after the certified, non-certified employee benefits.
Yep.
And medical benefits is the first page in that section.
Where, um, where are we right now?
With our claims year-to-date?
Yes.
We're running just above the expected claims, you know, this year was about,
The one point one?
One point one, so we're running just above that, and that's, um, before the reimbursement. So I, I expect we'll come in net-net, um, a little bit above the claims budget, but with the reimbursements we're gonna get for stop-loss and for prescription drug rebates. The reserve balance probably will be about where we started the year, around two million dollars, which is a good thing, right? We're not dipping too far below reserves. I know that as of November, our reserves were about one point six months worth of claims. But as we roll into the new HSA year in January, you know, we should expect to see those claims subside a bit and, um.
So if we, if we finish the year at, at, um, two million in, in the reserve, so we're at one point,
Eight, nine.
Yeah, of, um, of the two years. So does that still necessitate the increase of eight percent over, you know, a month next year?
It, it does because that's, that eight percent is the expected increase in the claims rate, so yes. Expecting the claims to go to one point, you know, one eight, um, million, one point one eight million per month.
And refresh my aging memory, that's from, that's from the insurance companies, correct? That's where you're getting that from?
Yes, that's from USI, is our insurance broker.
So they'll, they'll tell us over the course of the next year, your overall bill is gonna be, you know, thirteen million and change. And so we break that out or fourteen million.
And then add on the two-year or, yeah, or the two months worth.
Anything at all with the balance. We just are paying what the projection is supposed to be. So we could be at two point four months or, or point four months, and we're saying we're just paying what the projection is for the year.
And maintaining balance, and I apologize because you did say that during your presentation.
Hopefully, you know, with that cushion we have over time, we settle at about two months. That, that would be the most comfortable place. And, you know, like Vin said, we're, we're close to that now, a little under, but historically, at the start of the plan year with a high deductible plan, the bills go down because people like me that are in the plan have a five thousand dollar deductible or whatever. We have to pay that upfront, so the claim costs go down for the first few months, increases the amount that's in the kitty. So these things pan out over time, um, but we're budgeting exclusively for how much USI is telling us our benefits will cost all of our employees over the course of the next year, nothing more.
Um, and I said last, but, um, I did have one more. The, um, there were three positions that were, um, being paid for by the, the ESER funds that you're continuing. Um, is there anything else out there that would offset some of those costs? I, I've gotta believe that other districts are, you know, are in the same boat that we are, that they used ESER funds to hire these staff and they obviously wanna keep them. Is there, you know, is there anything out there?
The, frankly, there, most, most cases are worse off than we are, um, because they invested more in personnel than we did. Again, I, I think that's something that we would've invested in anyway, and you would've seen a gradual increase in those positions over the last couple of years because our enrollment's gone up. So that's kinda why we're facing a fiscal cliff. It wasn't necessarily failure to plan as much as it was planning that, knowing, you know, our enrollment was, I didn't think it would go up the mu-, as much as it did. You know, then we basically are assuming those positions now where we had it paid for in the past. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of, because there is such demand and so much of it is need-based, that grant funding, Cheshire's on the outside looking in. Um, when Meriden has twice the fiscal need as a community, um, that Cheshire has, and twice as many people, twice, like fifteen times as many people that are on the fiscal cliff, we're not gonna see that, to be honest with you. We're just not gonna see that grant money. I mean, not that we will stop looking, you know, and we apply when things come, but we've had more success and we've been really pursuing heavily, uh, like H Vanc-, H VAC grant money. Vin spent a lot of time submitting, um, requests for grants through Department of Administrative Services, and hopefully we hear on that soon. Vin, is there a timeline on that? A rough timeline?
No, I mean, we responded, um,
I knew that we responded last week.
Last week to, uh, information request from them, which is a good sign, but they, I don't have a definitive timeframe. They haven't released any.
I mean, if I, if I find that, cause sometimes they'll, uh, signal us that this is the date we're gonna release the grant information. Uh, if I find out that that's in the near future, I will certainly pass that on to you.
And I promise this is the last question. Um, retirements, what did you budget for and where do you stand as we sit here in mid-March?
Unfortunately, uh, or fortunately, I guess, I don't know, we've had numerous retirements over the last several years. Post-COVID, I think, really took a lot out of people, and so, uh, I think we have two people that I know of that are retiring now. The conundrum that we're running into, and I know, Peter, you heard me talk at, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Dinner about, um, the state of teaching right now and the, uh, real challenges that we're facing. If we post an elementary teaching position tomorrow, I, I can get candidates. Outside of that, um, they're, they're just not coming out of schools. And it's a huge problem for us. I mentioned at that dinner, we had a school psychologist opening. We are an incredibly desirable still district to work in. We had two applications, two. And the person that we hired wa-, was an experienced person from someplace. So when we're looking at replacing retirees, when I used to be able to say, we can pick up savings here because I'm gonna hire somebody who's relatively new to the profession and will make a positive contribution in our district and, you know, uh, put, uh, an appropriate pipeline in place for us, that, that isn't so much an option anymore. So now I find that we're hiring experienced people at a wash in terms of the, there's no savings anymore because I had to hire somebody who's been teaching for fifteen years in Amity to take this job in Cheshire. That, you know, is, it's a, forget about the budget. Uh, it's a long-term, serious problem for education that we don't have enough young people coming out with, uh, desire to be a classroom teacher. And so, you know, even with the two people, I have one's, uh, special ed, um, I forget the other position off the top of my head, but, um, I, I'm not sure that I'll be able to save any money on that anymore, uh, unfortunately.
Dr. Solon and, and Mr. Maciana, thank you very much. Appreciate, uh, your time and the presentation tonight. Mr. Grippo, on behalf of the council, please pass along our thanks as well to the, your colleagues on the Board of Education. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will hand it back to you.
Are you sure you're done?
Positive.
Okay.
He's such a tease.
Uh, I, I have a, does anyone else have any, any questions at this time?
I just have one more follow-up for, for my.
Sure.
Uh, just on the, the medical benefits side, um, do you find that there was more of an increase in claims or just increase in costs? Because like, and I see kind of there's a, probably something coincides with retirements of teachers, bringing in younger teachers. The claim number, claims would go down, I would assume, but I just wasn't sure if, I mean, eight percent compared to where it was in twenty-one, twenty-two. It's, it's, it's not so bad.
Yeah, right, it's a gift relatively.
Yeah.
But Vin, you can answer that better.
Sure. So, um, what I've been looking at, and it, this is a phenomenon that's been occurring since the pandemic. The, not the number, total number of claims hasn't changed much, but the number of claims that are over twenty-five thousand dollars has increased and the size of those claims has also increased. The way that our insurance works is that if there's a claim over a hundred seventy-five thousand, we pay for stop-loss insurance to reimburse us, and, and that has continued to happen. But we've got large, a larger number of claims between twenty-five and under a hundred seventy-five thousand that we don't get reimbursed for, and that's increased. And those claims are cancer, um, heart disease, some related to diabetes, quite a bit of, of hip, or just generally joint, hip, you know, bone, knee. Some of those are replacements, so, and then also, you know, the other category that's been relatively high is, uh, issues related to, to, uh, childbearing. And that seems to be the largest driver as a general statement within our claims. And then both for the town, uh, and the Board of Ed, the cost of prescription drugs because of all the new breed of drugs, those costs are, um, while our, our claims costs outside of drugs is increasing at, let's say, a seven percent or so rate, drug costs are increasing at about twenty percent per year within our claims. So that is another driver, and it's, it's not just the board and the town, it's just across the board, you know. I, I would mention, you know, and I know we're not gonna, um, do all of this tonight, but if you look at page two on the medical benefits, when you have a chance to review it, you know, we talk about our claim. But if you look at page two on the medical benefits, when you have a chance to review it, you know, we talk about our claims and the costs. But page two really breaks out, how does it really work? We have claims, we have stop-loss premiums we pay for, we also contribute to employee HSA. So if you look, you know, the actual cost of providing medical benefits is about 17 million. But then we get $2 million that employees pay towards their coverage. We get another roughly $500,000 back for a stop-loss reimbursement on those claims over 175,000. So the 14-plus million that we budget is the net of all of that. But if we're going to talk more about medical benefits in a future meeting, which we generally do, you know, we'll, we'll spend some time kind of talking through that a bit more.
And I just have a quick question. Obviously, the issue of, for example, fencing was brought up or what, just, just out of curiosity. I haven't had a chance to find it in here, but what is the cost of adding fencing to, as a varsity sport, do you know?
$19,000 net.
Net, okay.
Because there's a, you know, there's the operating costs, but then students pay an activity fee. So that's why there's a net cost.
Gotcha. Do they pay an activity fee if it's only a club level? Okay. And the other question I have, and this isn't really budget-related, but, but this kind of came up while I'm thinking about it. Cause we, you know, we were talking earlier about the elementary schools and moving and kids being moved around and where they are. But just out of curiosity, whatever, three, four years ago, a map was put together by the Board of Education estimating where the district lines would be for the various elementary schools and sort of where you might go. And obviously that's, it was, it was put out there as this is an, this is what we think it may be, but it's not written in stone. With the population increasing that we're seeing since even that map was put out, have, has that, has that been revisited at all yet or are you rating until, until you get closer to the opening of the schools yet? To see where those boundary lines might ultimately be?
Just to lay any concerns out there, when we initially designed that map, when I say we, it wasn't Vin and I in the conference room.
Right.
You know, professionals who do this for a living. We met with, like we did at that time too. We, we knew that a lot of the stuff was in the works. So that wasn't designed absent that knowledge and then dramatically different. The new plan will be done probably during the '25 or '26 school year, early, maybe late next '24, '25 year. Where we'll meet with demographers and specialists who will redistrict. And one of the things that we really are trying to adhere to is if you're going to move buildings and go to a new building, if you're going to Norton, you're going to Norton, the new Norton. But if you're going to Highland and we redistrict, we're not going to send you to a new building, an older building. If you have to move, we're trying to make sure you can go to a new building. And so that'll be part of the consideration when that's done and if you said, end of next school year, beginning of next semester.
Right. So, okay. So I just wanted to make sure, at this point, there's been no, no sort of revision in contemplation of a final revision? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. So a couple more questions. I know it's, it's getting a little late. But as far as the student fees or student activity fees go, so when, so you're assuming you add or we add a, a new sport, you know, fencing. Are you, does that then kick in a higher activity fee for everyone? Is that how, in part how you would pay for that? Or is there any consideration of that?
I don't think there was a consideration of that. We had discussed the, the activity fee is stagnant. It's in the book and then we'll plug you in a page in a moment, but there is a fee for each season that you play with a cap. And the only one that's a little bit different is hockey is a little bit higher because of base costs. But the guy.
Yes.
I think it's 550, I think, right? Is that the, is that the cap?
Yeah. So it's $125 per student per sport, which we haven't changed since 2017, 2018. Ice hockey is 225 per student. There's a $300 cap per student for the school year. And then there's also a $550 cap for a family.
And that's really just in essence offsetting costs. We survey other communities, identify what their fees are. Trying to make sure that it's comparable. We don't take the cost of offering athletics and divide that amongst the participants or anything. It's just a set fee.
Right.
Presents an offset.
Right. So one, one fee you mentioned, Vin, hadn't been increased since 2017, 2018, you said?
It's $125 per student. It's been at that same rate since 2017, 2018.
Right.
I think we've proposed increasing it, but it didn't get proved.
Right.
So it's remained at that level.
Okay. So the Board of Ed is reluctant to increase that, I guess? Is that what's happened?
I think that's fair to say.
Yeah.
You know, and the, even though we have a high number of 1% of kids participating. Increase of $25 is something that's pretty high.
Right. I'm sympathetic to the fencing personally. My, a few of my kids have participated in fencing in the junior high grades in, over in Wallingford. So it's a great sport, very demanding. Not the best parent viewing sport or parent, but my kids are in rowing too, which is probably the worst parent viewing sport there is. So, you know, but it's, it is a great sport. As far as the, Sean had mentioned increase in state funding, anticipated increase in state funding. I assume most of that is, would go to education? Is that anticipated in, in your budget or, or no?
Increase in state funding, I wouldn't anticipate that. From our, our revenue has been about $10 million a year.
Okay.
ECS revenue since like the dawn of man. And we don't anticipate that necessarily going anywhere significant. I know that the legislature made efforts last year.
I think it's the, maybe it's just the governor's proposed budget at this point. Sean had noted an increase of 3.9% in state funding.
I assume a lot of that goes. Yeah, when we go through our budget book, from the education cost share, I think is up maybe $45,000 or something smaller. That's on page 117 of our, of our vertical book. But I think largely what you're seeing there, and there's some others that are moving up and down based on assumptions. But as I did reference that unrelated to education, there's the municipal revenue sharing account. That's this sort of elusive, we're budgeting 500,000. We've received at least that for the last two years. But really up until this year, we're advised against budgeting for it because it was so uncertain. So that's the state grant money I was referencing there.
Right.
Either way, even education cost share, as, as Jeff had said earlier, those revenues come into the general fund. They are earmarked for education and there's certain reporting that we do, but there's no direct offset to their expenditure budget from any of those state budget approved grants that come straight to us.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely asking CS. And that revenue slide you can see in the PowerPoint. All that goes to the sound after our budget, which is why we just reported our operating costs.
Okay. I'm glad I asked. Good clarification. As far as the new program you suggest or you're, you're proposing, the engineering and science, education, science. I think from your presentation, the additional costs for that are about 160,000. That's for the two teachers mainly?
280 total.
Or 280?
For the teachers.
Okay.
120 to initiate supplies. It was actually higher, but I'm going to try and work with the Cheshire foundation.
Are the two teachers, new teachers or they're just kind of re-allocated existing teachers?
They would be new positions.
Okay.
So even if it was a, it existed returning to Cheshire public schools, we would replace that teacher.
Right. So either way, it's a net of two new teachers. Right. Okay. All right. And I did have a, maybe an esoteric question about utilities. I saw, it's like an 11% increase in utilities. Is that just, that's electricity costs? That's, what is that? Is that fuel oil cost or where's that being driven from mainly?
It's, it's primarily our electricity costs.
Okay.
We had our electricity contract, a multi-year contract had expired. And we've not been able to replace it with a better contract. We were paying 8 cents a kilowatt hour. 8 cents a kilowatt hour roughly. We're at around 11 right now. So, yeah, we're just budgeting for higher electricity costs as well as some higher heat and energy costs just based on the current market. We, we're always shopping to see if we can get a replacement contract.
Right. Okay. Thanks. That's all I have actually. But thank you guys for being here again tonight and.
Let us know when to come back.
We're all very proud of our schools. I think I can say that for, for the, for the council here and appreciate all your, all your efforts.
I'm actually going to take it back for a minute. Thank you, Mr. Budget Chair. I have a couple things just for, for Mr. Jaskot and Mr. Kimball, just not for discussion tonight, but just to kind of put on your radars based on, based on the presentation tonight. And I know some of this stuff is in the books, so I just haven't gotten to those pages and found it yet. Current cost of a mil, which, which is an easy one.
It's just about $4 million, almost on the nose.
Four? Okay.
Grand. Right. Yeah, our grand list is almost exactly 4 billion. It's 3.998. So the math is a little easier this year. One mil equals $4 million of either increased revenue or decreased expenditures.
The, nope, that one was answered. That's good. The 500,000 Sean that recommended, proposed for the fiscal year 25 budget out of ARPA. So that leaves us seven, around 700.
$798,000.
Okay. Do you have in the book, do you know offhand? If not, I'd like to take a look at projected revenue from grand list growth going forward. Because obviously we're, we're not, you know, we were at the 1 point, would you say 1.9?
1.29 absent revolve this year?
Yeah.
That's right.
But it's not taking into account what's coming on and, you know, that we haven't seen the grand list growth for. We've seen the permitting and stuff for it. So just kind of a.
Or we've seen stuff that's come on that can't go into the general fund yet because it's in the TIF account.
Right.
And we have a lot of that too.
Okay. Can, is there any way to project and look at that? What, yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see that number too. And I think. Oh, the, and I can probably do the math on this, but you guys, I'm sure Jim has it somewhere. When we were looking at fund balance and surplus projections on the bottom of slide 16. And without my glasses, I can't see. I know it's over 12. But what is it, what use, what dollar amount use would get us to 11%? I know that 3.8 gets us, we're, we're 3.8 over, which would get us to 10%. What's the, what's the magic number for 11%?
Okay. Yeah, we can provide that.
And that's it. Anyone else before we, then I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Walsh and a second from Mr. Velliber. Thank you. Vote, I guess, would be appropriate. And everyone unanimous by those present, then we are officially adjourned.